The City of Mullins administration and council members want to keep you informed. Please join us now for the City of Mullins Council Meeting.
To the city council meeting, and we will start off as we always do with the pledge of allegiance. And Officer Paxton, I'm so glad you made an appearance. Would you please lead us in the pledge, followed by the invocation by the chaplain?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right, Father. In the name of Jesus, we thank you tonight for this opportunity, this occasion, and thank you for those who gather here today. As we go before and do the business of the city, that you'll give us wisdom and understanding to make sound decisions and bring pleasure to your heart. We thank you now for the citizens of this great city and for its leadership. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
The local media has been informed of the time and the date of this meeting pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion.
It's a made second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda, and I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number four is our consent agenda. The items under the consent agenda, under item A is approval of minutes, August 13th, 2019, which was a city council meeting. Item number B, approval of minutes, August 19th, 2019, special city council meeting. And item number C, approval of the monthly bills. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number five, new business. If council will indulge me just one brief moment before we get into new business, I just want to make a very quick statement. I have done a lot of soul searching, I've done a lot of thoughtful prayer, and I have I wanted to share with you tonight that a month and a half ago, I was diagnosed with diabetes, and although it's a controllable disease, I wouldn't wish it on anybody, but be that as it may, I look to the future, I look for my help, just as Terry is concerned about her help, and we'll ask her to share anything she feels like sharing later. But I have, in light of so many things that have happened during my tenure and a half, I've given a lot of prayerful thought, and I have made the decision that I will not, I will finish out my term, but I will not run for office in the future, nor will I let anybody talk me into doing it. It's time for me to go out to pasture, it's time for somebody new to come in, and I just wanted to go on and put it out there, because the rumors are out there, and I've enjoyed the pleasure of serving, and I've enjoyed the pleasure of serving with you. So my decision has been made, my mind is made up, and I thank you for your indulgence. Item number five, new business, resolution number 19-006, a resolution designating the city hall parking area as a site of a public festival or special event at which alcoholic beverages may be consumed.
I thought we had already...
We have.
Are we adding something to this?
We have to do it.
Okay.
You want to handle all these at once, or one by one?
I think one by one.
Okay.
And if you should, you know, this is just like a regular motion, but if you choose not to, because we had two last year that didn't just don't sign.
Okay. All right. Resolution 19-006, I'll entertain a motion.
Take the motion before we sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Make the motion, and it's approved.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. I hear a second. I'll second. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, here.
If there is a nay, she needs to know.
We can do a roll call if we need to.
And I need to explain?
No.
No?
Mm-mm.
Okay. I said nay.
Okay.
Nay.
Okay. Eddie?
I said nay.
Yep. Ms. Carolyn?
I guess I'm going to need a question.
Yeah, I need a question, I mean, I wanted...
I wish I knew where I were last year.
We are...
Can I ask to address that?
You were...
Nay.
Last year.
You were nay.
You were nay last year.
What she did? She didn't agree.
I lose that, you know, I read the resolution. Let me see, what question did I have? Because I think when I do something, I need to be... If this is the same resolution, 19... Okay. I think my concern is the note that was made by the police department, and I probably should have inquired prior to. And I think my concern is that, okay, their concern is having enough manpower, correct me if I'm wrong, to handle the street and the house. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So...
But all this, all this resolution is doing is keeping it off of the city hall parking lot. It's still going to be over in the Anderson Brothers' bank parking lot.
What was meant, not...
Yeah, I understand it's on the Anderson parking lot, but I think the shelter is the place that they wanted to contain, is that right?
That's it. In the past, we had, when we didn't use the parking lot, to have let people walk around, there had to be officers to keep them separate, to keep cops away from where the people were tasting on Friday night. So all it would mean is we would just have to re-have officers there.
Okay. Let me ask this question. Could council or the city be held liable for any accidents or incidents of any kind related to alcohol consumption? And I don't know who...
Can I address that?
You've got our attorney right here.
If I make numbers...
Pretty quick to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. And also, I think the saying that somebody tricked on Sidewalk.
Sure.
Steve? Yeah, of that, can I... Did you finish, Carolyn?
Lawyer has spoken. Chief, does this note explains where the police department stands?
Well, I've seen it all in, in the past, the past few years that we've inhabited, we haven't had, we haven't had any problems. And, you know, anything can happen at any time. But, you know, knock on wood, the last, the last, the last few years have been peaceful. So I always stand on it. We don't, we don't have any actions to do, but only, only thing we need to know from our outside that, you know, is y'all going to allow the alcohol to be consumed on, on the other city property. If you agree to it, there's no problem, then if you don't agree, agree to it, then, you know, we will, we will enforce it as best as we can.
Okay, so the parking lot is considered Anderson Bank property?
Right. Parking lot over there is Anderson. Only property we, we're really concerned about is, was behind this building.
Okay.
Can I add something to that? It was not only that, Carolyn, thank you, and my reasons for not saying yes is because of city property, and the fact that I asked a question last time, if someone were to drive off and get in an accident after being here, will I be held accountable for an incident they have anywhere when they leave the parking lot and they're drunk? That was my question. Will I be held accountable? If I make a mistake, I will be held accountable. Is that right?
You said it.
I mean, that was the reason, that's why I said no last year, because you said yes, I would be...
You can sue anybody. Anybody can sue anybody for the fact that the city could be held liable, how long you can be individualized.
On the city council.
If you were born drunk.
Sounds good. But I've had some people to question me as to why we allowed it, and these are people who live where I live, who don't think that I should, and I'm going by what my constituents tell me, so I have to go along with them.
True.
But then I stand to be corrected last year, because I was informed that I would be held accountable as a city council if anyone were to get injured drinking alcohol on city property. And the concern was about the bag, it wasn't about Anderson, we knew Anderson Brothers, is that correct? Correct me.
They'll be drinking in this parking lot.
Okay, and Anderson Brothers.
In the past, if we hear, I don't know, we've had anybody in our parking lot, do you remember? Has anybody been drinking in our parking lot? Because I don't think so.
Yeah.
It's like a different name, they're on the other side. But I know the barbecue festival has their own insurance policy as well.
That's the barbecue man. Jim, would you like to, since you carried it up, would you like to address it?
Come here, with council staff, my name is Jim Bayne, I'm the event organizer for the barbecue festival. Through the years, I've gotten to know many of you, you've helped out with it. It's been a good festival.
Always.
The beer line sales, the sale and serving takes place near the bandstand in that area, in what we refer to as the Anderson Brothers' bank parking lot. The cook teams and the setups are all through the city hall parking lot, beginning on Friday and going through about 2:00 Saturday afternoon. Where beverages are consumed is when someone is served on the Anderson Brothers' bank side, and during the 7 to 9 Anything But Open Tasting. Someone takes their beer in a cup and attempts to walk through the driveway from Anderson Brothers' into the city area to walk through and take the samples that are being provided as part of the... There's not actual service on this side, it's an incidental consumption, and most people that are actually consuming alcoholic beverages are probably going to be in the areas of fancy. This year, we are not doing an open tasting on Saturday, so we'll be serving barbecue plates in the area between the bandstand and the chatterbox.
Yes.
Part of the area that's fenced off of on that side. We'll have a picnic table set up over there, and people will actually be able to sit over there and eat rather than walking through and tasting with the different cook teams. So would you need the young people to help us carry plates?
Yes. Yeah, they'd be glad to help. My question, and I'm glad you addressed it tonight, because I did not thoroughly understand it the last time, I don't think it was explained to me in that manner that the city didn't have anything to do with the responsibilities if anything would happen. And I think I addressed that question, that was my specific question. What accountability would I have if someone were to, and it was stated yes, and that was my reasons for not being in agreement with serving the drinks at the event? But am I being told today that if anything happens to anybody, Attorney Corley, that Anderson Brothers' bank would be responsible? Is that correct?
Well, I understand that potentially the city could be too.
Okay.
The sun, alcohol, there, the city, potentially the city.
Okay. Just need some clear clarification.
And again, I'm also an attorney, although I'm not practicing actively at this time. As Mr. Corley said, and as everybody here knows, anybody can be sued at any time for anything. All you have to do is get to the courthouse with a filing fee in your hand, or an affidavit that says you don't have the money to pay the fee, and you can be sued. Question is whether you can ultimately be held liable and responsible. The Golden Leaf Festival has proclaimed a liability insurance policy to cover that potential for ourselves. Obviously, the city is additionally insured, since we're using city property, as is Anderson Brothers' bank, I'm sure. So we have done what we can to limit the exposure.
Okay.
Is it absolutely bulletproof beyond all recognition?
No.
No, ma'am, I'm not going to function.
No.
But is it the best that we can do, given our resources and what we have at the time? Yes, ma'am, it is.
Right.
And I would ask each of you as council members to please consider this, and allow us to continue to support the festival and allow the consumption of the premises, and also for each and every one of you to come join us at the festival. Specifically, each of you come here at 6:00 Friday night in this room and help us as celebrity judges for the Anything But Contest, where you'll get tasty samples. You're in a controlled environment, you'll get the first shot at it. And then if you want to go back and get spoiled, you're welcome, but please, please come join us. We appreciate the support we've gotten from the City of Mullins over the last four years, this is our fifth year doing this, and as the chief told you, we try really hard to make sure that everything is under control. The band Friday night shuts down at 10:00. We have quiet time beginning at 11:00. We don't open back up again until 11:00 Saturday morning, and we're out of here by 2:30 or 3:00 Saturday afternoon.
Okay.
So we do watch. We have officers that are on site, we have staff and volunteers that are here. I would ask you to please consider approving this resolution, allowing us to continue as we have in the past, and the city continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any questions from council members or staff, I'd be happy to try to address those at this time.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
I just mentioned sorry, the nays, oh, no, it may have changed some of ours.
All right, hearing, hearing no further discussion, Councilman Woodbury, we're going to call for, for a roll call vote. Councilman Woodbury, how do you vote?
Nay.
Thank you.
Nay.
Oh, yes.
Is there some steering for that?
Well, you got to ride that fence now.
Vote your conscience. Your conscience.
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't want to be, and I want everybody to hear me, I don't have a problem with the event, okay? I don't have a problem with the event. I don't want to be the person who, what, hinders.
No.
I definitely like to see the event go on, you know, and I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
Either way I go, the event will take place, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay. I say nay.
Okay. Then the nays have it.
And what?
There will be no drinking in the city parking lot. So we have our vote?
Okay.
Okay, that's democratic process, we good. Okay. Next ordinance, ordinance number 19-007, an ordinance to approve a transaction concerning the donation of real property identified as a portion of Marion County Tax Map Number 404-01-03-0000. Yes.
This is the property that we have, that y'all have agreed to give to the...
Community Action Agency.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And so they're getting ready to apply for some grants that may be...
Now we can convey it.
Okay.
I don't believe we're going to have a struggle with this one.
Nope.
Okay, again, let me read it one more time for clarity. An ordinance, ordinance number 19-007, an ordinance to approve a transaction concerning the donation of real property identified as a portion of Marion County Tax Map Number 404-01-03, knock, knock. We'll just do that for brevity. We've already had the surveys done.
2.1 acres, is that property?
Yep. It was done by, I believe, David Byrd, and everything's, all we need to do is just vote on it and make it happen so they can get started.
Everybody's aware where their property is located?
Mm-hmm. All right. I'll entertain a motion. A motion to approve, a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, the ayes have it. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I want to know whether the public know what we're talking about. We're talking about having a Head Start program in Mullins. We have one in the housing authority, but they're talking about enlarging the program and providing not a wellness center, but a recreational facility. It's going to be nice, it's going to be located...
On Academy.
On Academy Street, right in where the old football field used to be. That's the property that we're referring to, so you'll understand that, because the ordinance is not specifically telling you what properties we're talking about. So you would see this and not know this is what we're talking about. This is the property that's located, the old football field on Academy Street.
Between Park and East.
And that means that our Head Start program will improve, and I think that's a great positive for our Mullins.
Between Park and East.
Between Park and East, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Item number C, we have a legal briefing by the city attorney, Mr. Robert Corley.
Mayor, I find we need to go into executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to?
I think so.
I don't think we need to go into executive session. I don't think there's anything to hide from the public. It's already out there on Facebook that we are doing things that are not right, and I think the public deserves to hear it and hear all aspects of it.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we need to change anything because it's on Facebook. I don't go on Facebook, and half of what's on there probably is not true. I think you need to go into executive session. I agree with the need for, because I need to get a little bit more clarification on what's being said, what's being stated, and I would hope that we would be in agreement to go into executive session so we can understand it thoroughly. I make a motion in reference to this issue, this legal briefing by our attorney Corley, that we go into executive session.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. It doesn't matter, Bob, let's go.
Let's do it again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have returned from executive session where no action was taken, and I need a, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
A motion to come out, I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would be the appropriate time, saying we have come out of executive session with no action taken. All right. We're down to, well, we've closed out, we have one person who asked to speak today.
Who has a committee report tonight?
I would like to update everybody on District 3 and the possibilities of, if you're aware that in May, Holly and Tarris Gilchrist and myself attended PD Cobb, council of government to discuss the opportunity of getting a grant, beautification, abandoned houses, to destroy some. As an update, as of now, updates, time is winding up to get everything we need in as far as the city's concerned. We've already voted for the 10% that we have to have towards the grant. We've already identified Eddie Edwards, the code enforcer, Felicia Sawyer, Clerk Court, Tarris, myself, and Holly. We've already agreed, I've gotten basically much of the information that we're in need of, we're still working on it, and hopefully by the due date, we should have everything in as a possibility of having at least 15 abandoned houses out of 24 in one district, and this is a grant that we'll be able to apply for the next two or three years, and that means we'll be able to get all of our properties taken care of. And this is just like the piggy bank of...
Piggy banking.
Piggy banking of each other, but hopefully this will begin our process. If you've noticed and looked around in the city, you see that there are a lot of new homes coming up, and in order for those homes to have the true value that they deserve, some of these abandoned houses need to come down. As far as the owners of the properties, some giving you no, saying no, but some are saying yes, so we're hoping that we'll get our first successful project completed, and then we can continue until we get the city cleaned up. I just want to keep you abreast on what's going on, I'm excited, and I hope we get it.
And I drove through that area, and it's very obvious which ones, you know, that they're working on.
Yes.
Any further committee reports?
I wanted to mention something, and let Kurt deal with it, however. Councilman Terry had mentioned a program in Texas in November, and I also am interested in that if there were funds available for that, I didn't know, because I looked to see if I was available at that time. That's just not that you and I can tell. And that's why I was going to see if that was a possibility.
Okay.
I guess I need to know who else to get in.
Me?
Can, Holly, I know we talked about you checking into the cost. What would be the approximate cost for each council person to go?
With registration, a hotel, a flight, I think it'll come somewhere around $3,063.
Per person.
What we are talking about, because we're kind of like talking over your head, you don't know what he's saying. Myself and Councilman Wilson and Kitchen have, are asking permission to attend the National League of Cities. It's an annual conference, it's held every year, and it's a positive enforcement for our city. We get a chance to talk and conversate with our federal people and local people and find out what's going on in other cities. In fact, some of the problems that we're having here, other cities are having. It's normally a big turnout of council people from all over the United States attending this, and I think Council Wilson and myself have attended before.
I'm a member.
Yeah, she's a member, so we're hoping we can find a funding.
Who's chairman of, who's chairman of the Finance Committee?
I am.
Would you and Holly and your committee get together and study this and see what the feasibilities are? If one goes, everybody should go, but...
Councilman Wilson, I need you.
Okay.
Okay.
I need to do this in some capacity.
I know.
February 8th.
Yes, I know, or complete, November 20th, 26th, 24th.
19th.
held accountable as a city council if anyone were to get injured drinking alcohol, um, on city property. And the concern was about the back. It wasn't about Anderson. We knew Anderson Brothers. Is that correct? Correct me.
They'll be drinking in this parking lot.
Okay, and Anderson Brothers.
In the past few years, I don't know if we had anybody in our parking lot, do you remember? Has anybody been drinking in our parking lot in the past?
Yeah.
I hope so. They play different names over the other side. But I bet the barbecue festival has their own insurance policy as well.
Barbecue man.
That's barbecue man. Jim, would you like to, would you, since you, since you head it up, would you like to address it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council staff, my name is Jim Bayne. I'm the event organizer for the barbecue festival. Uh, through the years, I've gotten to know many of you, you've helped out with it. It's been a good festival.
Always.
The beer line sales, the sale and serving takes place near the bandstand in that area in what we refer to as the Anderson Brothers Bank parking lot. The cook teams and the setups are all through the City Hall parking lot, beginning on Friday and going through about two o'clock Saturday afternoon. Where beverages are consumed is when someone is served on the Anderson Brothers Bank side and during the seven to nine Anything But Open Tasting. Someone takes their beer in a cup and attempts to walk through the driveway from Anderson Brothers into the city area to walk through and take the samples that are being provided as part of the... There's not actual service on this side. It's an incidental consumption. And most people that are actually consuming alcoholic beverages are probably going to be in the area of the bandstand. Uh, this year, we are not doing an open tasting on Saturday. So, we'll be serving barbecue plates in the area between the bandstand and the chatterbox parking area that's fenced off of on that side. We'll have a picnic table set up over there, and people will actually be able to sit over there and eat rather than walking through and tasting with the different cook teams. So, would you need the young people to help us carry plates?
Yes, yeah, they'd be glad to help. My question, and I'm glad you addressed it tonight because I did not thoroughly understand it the last time. I don't think it was explained to me in that manner that the city didn't have anything to do with the responsibilities if anything would happen. And I think I addressed that question. That was my specific question. What, what accountability would I have if someone were to, and it was stated yes, and that was my reasons for not being in agreement with serving the drinks at the event? But if, am I being told today that if anything happens to anybody, um, Attorney Corley, that Anderson Brothers Bank would be responsible? Is that correct?
Well, I understand that the chances of the city could be too.
Okay.
If there's any alcoholic behavior in the city, the chances would be...
See. Okay. Just be some clear clarification.
And again, you know, I'm also an attorney, although I'm not practicing actively at this time. As Mr. Corley said, and as everybody here knows, anybody can be sued at any time for anything. All you have to do is get to the courthouse with a filing fee in your hand or an affidavit that says you don't have the money to pay the fee.
Mm-hmm.
And you can be sued. Question is whether you can ultimately be held liable and responsible. The Golden Leaf Festival has proclaimed a liability insurance policy to cover that potential for ourselves.
Okay.
Obviously, the city is additionally insured, since we're using city property, as is Anderson Brothers Bank, I'm sure. So, you know, we have done what we can to limit the exposure.
Okay.
Is it absolutely bulletproof beyond all recognition?
No.
No, ma'am, I, I'm not going to promise you anything. But is it the best that we can do, given our resources and what we have at the time? Yes, ma'am, it is.
Right.
And I, I would ask each of you as council members to please consider this and allow us to continue this with the festival and allow the consumption of the premises. And also for each and every one of you to come join us at the festival. Specifically, each of you come here at six o'clock Friday night in this room and help us as celebrity judges for the Anything But contest, where you'll get tasty samples. If you're in a controlled environment, you'll get the first shot at it. And then if you want to go back and get, spoil you up, but please, please come join us. We appreciate the support we've gotten from the city of Mullins.
And our, the last four years, this is our fifth year doing this.
Yep.
As the chief told you, we try really hard to make sure that everything is under control.
Okay.
The band Friday night shuts down at ten o'clock. We have quiet time beginning at eleven o'clock. We don't open back up again until eleven o'clock Saturday morning, and we're out of here by two thirty or three o'clock Saturday afternoon.
Okay.
So, we do watch. We have officers that are on site. We have staff and volunteers that are here. I would ask you to please consider approving this resolution, allowing us to continue as we have in the past, and the city continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any questions from council members or staff, I'd be happy to try to address those at this time.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing no...
I just need to start. The nays, no, the nays and changes.
All right, hearing, um, hearing no further discussion, Councilman Woodbury, we're gonna call for, for a, um, a roll call vote. Councilman Woodbury, how do you vote?
Nay.
Thank you.
Nay.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Is some steel on your face?
Well, you got to ride that fence now.
Vote your conscience. Your conscience.
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't want to be, and I want everybody to hear me, um, I don't have a problem with the event. Okay? I don't have a problem with the event. I don't want to be the person who, what hinders.
Yeah.
I, I, I definitely like to see the event go on, you know, and I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
Either way I go, the event will, will take place, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I say nay.
Okay, then the nays have it.
And what?
There won't, there will be no drinking in the city parking lot. So, so we have our vote?
Okay.
Okay, that's the democratic process. We good. Okay? Um, next out, next ordinance, ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero seven, an ordinance to approve a transaction concerning the donation of real property identified as a portion of Marion County Tax Map number four oh four dash zero one dash zero three dash zero 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 zero. Um, yes, um...
This is the property that we, that y'all have agreed to give to the PD...
Community Action Agency.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And so, I'll, they're getting ready to apply for some grants, so they need...
Now we can convey it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe we're gonna have a struggle with this one.
Nope.
Okay, um, again, let me read it one more time for clarity. An ordinance, ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero seven, an ordinance to approve a transaction concerning the donation of real property identified as a portion of Marion County Tax Map number four oh four dash zero one dash zero three, knock, knock. We'll just do that for brevity. Um, we've already had the surveys done.
One acres.
Yep. It was done by, I believe, David Byrd and everything's, all we need to do is just vote on it and, uh, make it happen so they can get started.
Everybody's aware where their property is located?
Mm-hmm. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion. A motion to, a motion to approve, a motion to approve in a second. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, the ayes have it. Um, okay.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I want to know whether the public know what we're talking about. We're talking about, um, having a Head Start program in Mullins. We have one at, in, in the Housing Authority, but they're talking about enlarging the program and providing not a wellness center, but a, a recreational facility. It's gonna be nice. It's gonna be located, um...
On Academy.
On Academy Street, right, in where the old football field used to be. That's the property that we're, we're referring to, so you'll understand that. Because the ordinance is not specifically telling you what properties we're talking about. So, you would see this and not know this is what we're talking about. This is the property that's located, the old football field on Academy Street.
Between Park and East...
And, and that means that our Head Start program will improve, and I think that's a great positive for our, um, Mullins.
Between Park and East.
Between Park and East, yes, thank you.
Okay, um, item number C. We have a legal briefing by the city attorney, Mr. Robert Corley.
I think I need to go into executive session.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we need to?
I don't think so.
I, I don't think we need to go into executive session. I don't think there's anything to hide from the public. I, um, it's already out there on Facebook that we are doing things that are not right, and, um, I think the public deserves to hear it and hear all aspects of it.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we need to change anything because it's on Facebook. I don't go on Facebook, and half of what's on there probably is not true. I think you need to go into executive session. I agree with, um, the need for, um, because I need to get a little bit more clarification on what's being said, what's being stated. Um, and I would hope that we would be in agreement to go into executive session so we can understand it thoroughly. I make a motion in reference to this issue, this legal briefing, um, by our Attorney Corley, that we go into executive session. Second.
All right, I have a, I have a motion in a second. All, um, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. It doesn't matter, Bob, let's go.
Um, I don't, let's, let's do it again. All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, we have returned from executive session where, um, no action was taken, and I need a, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Go move.
A motion to come out, I have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would be the appropriate time, so then we have come out of executive session with no action taken. All right, um, we're down to, um, well, we've closed out. We have one person who asked to speak, and they... I'm sorry? Who has a committee report tonight?
I, I would like to update everybody on District Three and the possibilities of, um, if you're aware, that and May, Holly, and, uh, Torres, Gilce, and myself attended, PD Cobb, um, Council of Government, to discuss the opportunity of getting a va, a grant, beautification, abandoned houses to destroy some. Um, as an update, as of now, updates, the time is winding up to get everything we need in as far as the city's concerned. We've already voted for, um, the 10% that we have to have towards the grant. We've already identified Eddie Edwards, Code Enforcer, Felicia Sawyer, Clerk Court, Torres, myself, um, and, and Holly. We've already agreed, um, I've gotten basic, much of the information that we're in need of, we're still working on it, and hopefully by the due date, we should have everything in as a possibility of having, uh, at least, uh, 15 abandoned houses out of 24 in one district, and this is a grant that we'll be able to apply for the next two or three years, and that means we can be able to get all of our properties taken care of. And this is just like the piggy, uh, bank...
Piggy banking.
Piggy banking off each other, but hopefully this will begin our process. If you've noticed and looked around in the city, you see that there are a lot of new homes coming up. And in order for those homes to have the true value that they deserve, some of these abandoned houses need to come down. Um, as far as the owners of the properties, some giving you no, saying no, but, um, some are saying yes. So, we're hoping that we'll, we get our first successful project completed, and then we can continue until we get the city cleaned up. I just want to keep you abreast on what's going on. I'm excited, and I hope we get it.
And I, I go through that area, and it's very obvious which ones, you know, that they're...
Yes.
Working on.
Yes.
Any further committee reports?
I wanted to mention something, uh, and let, uh, Clark deal with it, however. Uh, Councilman, uh, Terry had mentioned, uh, a program in Texas in November, and I also interested in that if there were funds available for that. I didn't know, uh, because I looked to see if I was available at that time. And, uh, that's why I was, I was gonna go to see if that was a possibility.
I guess I need to know who wants to go. Me?
Can, um, Holly, I know we talked about you checking into the cost. What would be the approximate cost for each council person to go?
Uh, with registration, a hotel, a flight. I think it'll come somewhere around three thou, $3,063.
Per person.
What we are talking about, because we're kinda like talking over your head, you don't know what he's saying. Uh, myself and Councilman Wilson and Kitchen have, are, are asking permission to attend the National League of Cities. It's an annual conference that's held every year, and it's a positive enforcement for our city. We get a chance to, to talk and, um, conversate with our federal people and local people and find out what's going on in other cities. Um, in fact, some of the problems that we're having here, other cities are having. It's law, normally a big turnout of, uh, council people from all over the United States attending this, and I think Counsel Wilson and myself have attended before.
I'm a member.
Yeah, she's a member. So, um, we hoping we can find a fund.
Who's, um, who's chairman of, who's chairman of the Finance Committee?
I am.
Would you and Holly and, um, your, your committee get together and study this and see what the feasibilities are? If one, if one goes, everybody should go, but...
Councilman Woodbury and Councilman Wilson, uh, maybe...
Okay.
Okay.
I need to do this as soon as possible.
I know.
November 20, 2024.
San Antonio, Texas.
It's a great city.
Oh, push.
All right, who, who else has a committee report ready and prepared?
Yeah, I'm sorry, one more thing. The grass that are not cut, uh, are we still waiting on the tractor to come in? Is that the problem? What we have? So, if you're still seeing lots that have not been cut, that's the reason why. We ordered, uh, the right kind of lawnmower, I think, and that's why we wait tractor. And so we're waiting on it. As soon as that's in, uh, letters have already been sent out to families, to property owners in reference to the properties, and we should have a list ready to start cutting as soon as it comes in.
It's by y'all too. On the corner by you too.
Yeah.
I have a few, just a few things on the, um, tomorrow, flights of flying the gas staff for nine eleven.
Say that again?
Flies are flying the gas staff.
Okay.
For nine eleven.
Okay.
Um, we, we made it through the hurricane. Uh, yeah, so we've very little damage. City got some damage, um, but I think pretty much we made it there. Police, the fire and street. And, um, we bid out the repairs from the last hurricane. Library, some of the city hall and the, um, recreation dressing rooms should be, um, on their way to be fixed.
Holly, since you asked Recreation, where are we with the Parks Department? I meant with the Park on, um, Park Street. Recreation Center on Park Street. Where are we with that? Are we still waiting on what?
We're still in line.
It's still in line.
There's, they have a couple of projects before, before we can even, you're talking about the gym.
The gym? Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about...
Before we can even, um, bid out the engineering part, they have to, there's the projects before us that they have to get done.
And I gave a flyer to Felicia a few minutes ago, and I would like for her to read that. It's, it's like a, a free concert coming up in early October.
Mullins Coral Club presents Margaret Vance, Harpist and organist in concert. Massimo Nino, United Methodist Church, October 4th at 7:00 p.m. Concert is free. The nations will be excited to benefit the Mission Mullins.
And Mission Mullins was a program that was started this past June, uh, several ministers working together and going into certain areas that were normally deprived and, and working with some of those people and children in those areas.
And still working. Probably need to do some things.
Holly, it occurs to me that if we, um, were to pursue and push the county to reimburse us for the use of the Antiva Building during the last hurricane, which they told us they would, and they owe us, as I remember, a little over $17,000. It would make this trip a little more palatable if we could go. The county owes us. They sure do.
I thought FEMA was taking care of that.
They have never paid us.
Okay. Please do that.
Okay, all right.
Um, I, I, I already mentioned something like the last minute. I see a lot of new faces. I'd like to commend the police department and Chief of State with the first night out that they did.
Yes.
Um, I thought it was an awesome event, and it makes me very proud, uh, of our police department. And, uh, thank you, and we look forward to it next year.
And they cooked a lot of hot dogs that evening, too.
Any other business to come before council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it, and we stand adjourned.